I think we're ready to go here. I wonder if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 5th, 2014?
So moved.
Second it?
Second it.
All in approval?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Vice Chancellor Winchell has arranged for a presentation entitled Lehman Concert Hall to be made to the committee by Frank Michelli and Frank Weitzner of Michelli and Weitzner Architects.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the committee knows, we like to, as best we can, do some show and tell and do some projects which are of interest, both to the university and to the individual colleges that we're doing this work for. As the chair noted, this is entitled Lehman Concert Hall, and this is a project in which we are using our critical maintenance money and our ADA lump sum money to do a project which we think will greatly enhance the Performing Arts Center at Lehman. So I'm going to turn it over to Frank and to Michael, and they're going to take us through it.
Great. Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'm Michael Weitzner. That's my partner Frank Michelli. Good afternoon. We're going to talk to you about the Lehman College Concert Hall. So just to orient everybody, this slide is of the site. You can see to the north, it's bounded by Bedford Park Avenue, and to the west is Goulden Avenue with the reservoir, and to the east is Paul Avenue and a train yard, and then there's the elevated number four subway line right over here, which provides a very nice view to the building. The existing building was built in the 1970s, originally as a concert hall. Now it's also a performing arts center, which is an important distinction to the New York City Building Code. Because it was built in the late 70s, there was very little accessibility, so one of the goals of the project is to upgrade the accessibility, so that's in accordance with the American Disabilities Act as well. Another goal is to bring it up to New York City Building Code. It was, as you can see, it's a very solid structure, limestone. It's faceted, and there are these articulated stair towers on it. So here's a view looking on the left side down the vehicular driveway, and you can see the entrance just beyond the trees, and then on the right side of the screen, you can see the entrance to the concert hall. And that's where we're doing this new addition, this 6,000-square-foot addition. We're going to remove that entrance. We're going to put this new building there. Again, here's the site plan. So you can see on the site plan, I'll just use this cursor, right over here is where the addition is going. That view we took before was down this road, the vehicular access point, and then people enter from the west, from Goulden Avenue, and from the south. So, and here's a picture of what the building, the new pavilion is going to look like, and the concert hall is very important to the campus, but it's also very important to the surrounding community, and as such, the building, like a lantern, will signal to the surrounding community when it's lit at night that the house is lit and that performances are happening within. Just quickly, the program is, we're adding a box office, a new entrance lobby, some office space, some restrooms, and an elevator. I'm going to turn it over to Frank at this point, and he's just going to walk you through the design. So, as you can see from this rendering, the design is a very simple glass cube. The idea is that with this transparency of the glass, we're trying to open up the center, make this very solid existing building and open up and see some activities. And it's kind of a terminus to all the approaches to the building. As Michael mentioned, it's, the program is really a double-height entrance pavilion, entrance lobby, and above it, some administrative space. So the model I have right here is pretty much cutting the existing building here. So this is the existing concert hall, and it continues down. So the, you can see the glazing on the two facades and one of the stair towers. This is again going to, the original entrance is down below, what was, is also on this face, and we're just pulling out this expansion and continuing to enter in the same place in the existing building. I'm just going to run through quickly the plans of what we've done, and let me show you what we're doing in the overall hall. So this is a plan that shows the addition and the existing hall with the mezzanine-level plan, the stage, and it was, again, Michael mentioned, it was designed in the 70s, kind of an interesting design, but they didn't take into consideration any accessibility. So the entrance lobby here is at grade level, and there are some handicapped seats here, but then these lobbies are stepped down. There are each, there's a set of steps that drop down two feet in both of those locations. So there's no way presently to get any handicapped seating or wheelchairs down to any areas other than the top level of the orchestra. So what we're looking at is, in these two locations, we're adding ramping so that we're able to get wheelchair accessibility down these two levels and into this portion, the back of the theater. Again, we're bringing them down here with additional seats, again, to the back of the orchestra, and with a new handicap lift here, we're able to make a large drop down to this level, which is really the bottom of the stage. So people in a wheelchair could actually work their way all the way through down this lift and into the front of the theater. So the seating is in a number of different locations at different price points, which is really the spirit of the ADA. We're adding, there were originally six seats, we're adding 28 new ones, primarily on this level, and a few on the mezzanine level. There's also, we're also adding another lift from this level up onto the stage so that performers or even people from the spectators can come up onto the stage, and performers are able to also come across the stage and go down to the lower level for the changing areas, which they had no way of getting down an accessible route to the lower level before. This is an existing box office, which was originally the coat room. Since we're going to be putting a new box office in the addition, we're looking at taking this space, turning it into a, yeah, a small café, where we're going to be serving, a concession stand, where we'll be serving people out in the lobby, and in good weather, these doors will open up and people will be able to go out into the plaza. The next level is, let me show you. So this would be, again, the front door, and I'll go through this plan in a second, but just wanted to show that the entrance is still here with an actual relationship to the stair that goes up to the second level, and there's also the addition of a new elevator. So now we're able to get to the second floor with a means other than stairs. So this, the elevator would come up, land at the top of that monumental stair, and again, we'd have additional new accessible seating on this floor. This drop, this, these lobbies also drop, but they drop more than two feet. There's like a three-foot-six drop in level from here to here, so it wasn't possible with the space limitations that we have to put any ramping in and make any other accessible routes to this part of the plan. This is the balcony level. We're really not doing much on this floor at all, and this does not, the other two floors connect to the addition. This floor does not. So I'm just going to go through, this is an image showing what that lobby drop is. This would be at the front entrance, and the three steps that are dropping down, we would be doing some ramping here. This is a view of the main hall, where we're, in addition to adding some seats and rails, we're changing the carpeting, and we're, as Michael mentioned, some of the changes from the use as a concert hall to a performing arts center. We're going to have to add things like ADA hardware and some exit signs and other small items to make it accessible. This is a plan of the ground floor. Again, the main entrance into the vestibule, there's a small box office off to the side, a small milling space, and then there's a second pair of doors going into the main building. The addition is here, this is existing, the existing structure, this is new. We're adding a central core, which is going to have a mechanical space, as well as new bathrooms, which are definitely needed, all accessible. One would come in and either go up the stair here or up the new elevator to the second floor, and that floor, the elevator would open out into a lobby extension, so this would have actually an operable wall, a series of sliding panels, and when there's a performance, it would be open so that the lobby would kind of come out and be, it would be an extension to that lobby. Or if it's closed, this space, which is the administrative areas, can be separated so that mechanically there can be a cooling in the administrative suite without turning on the system for the whole building, so it's a much more efficient system. The administration is a very small group of offices, some workstations, and then there's a small stair and loft up above. The stairs would go up to a small loft, and that again would connect back to the elevator. And off to the side of the administration mezzanine is a little roof garden. As you can see in the model here, the roof just drops down, and there's a little outdoor space that they can come out to. This is a section cut through like the front entrance, and this would be the stair up to the mezzanine level, where the main core of the building, which houses the bathrooms behind it, it will be a material, kind of a refined version of the materials inside the building, which is poured concrete with board, it'll be board-formed concrete. So we're going to, we'll have an exposed concrete ceiling and board-formed concrete walls. The floors will be terrazzo. This is a section in the other direction that shows the main entrance, the double-height space, the bathrooms stacked with mechanical mezzanines, and the roof garden up above. Another section. This is a lighting study. That is, the basic concept is that we're trying to light the two ceilings. So above the box office and above these canopies, we've got lights kind of integrated into the structure, and that ceiling will be bright, and the ceiling up above will be bright at night, as well as a very slight wash of light up the elevator core. This is again a view from the exterior. I think we have some, do we not have the interior, interior views? So again, this is the view from DePaul Avenue. Thank you.
Any questions, Charles?
Is that a new structure away from the rail yards? What's the, the rear of this backs onto rail yards or above?
Yeah, the railroad yards are depressed. They're lower down.
Yeah, right, that I understood. So this is on the opposite side of that.
That's right.
Okay. And it opens onto the campus. Did you do anything with regard to the concert hall acoustics, or they remain the same?
No, they remain the same. The only thing we're doing that's significant is changing the carpet.
Carpet.
Yeah, a little ugly, the carpet right now.
And there's some requirements for nose edgings on the stairs. We're going to add that as well.
What's the seating capacity?
Twenty-three hundred.
Plus large.
And by the way, it's used quite extensively by the community, as well as the college. They have many events there, and, you know, this accomplishes a number of things for us. Number one, the ADA component was enormous, particularly for a space like this. And number two, it creates a beacon now for this performing arts center. And number three, I believe, this is just my opinion, sort of cleans up some not such great architecture. So I think it accomplishes three things all in once.
Good boughhouse.
It's so slagged.
What are we looking at for the project total? Because it looks like this is just the design phase.
Yeah, the total project cost is $7 million, give or take, you know, depending on when we go out to bid. But as I said, we cobbled together some critical maintenance money and a big chunk of ADA, and I think if the committee would remember, when we went over our budget for next year, we included in the budget as part of the money that we got from the state, $10 million to do ADA projects. And I'm hoping the committee will see more projects like this in which, you know, we're using our money both creatively and innovatively, but also dealing with these ADA issues.
Yeah, and I think that's a very prudent thing to do, because yes, as long as you're going in for the ADA, it's very good to make this kind of improvement.
And I think, I just want to congratulate the architects. I think they really both captured the scope of the project, and they really were able to achieve what we were trying to achieve in terms of creating a beacon for the community, which on this campus is, well, all our campuses is important, but particularly this campus. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move to the policy calendar. The policy items being presented today are items requiring action. Vice Chancellor Winchell?
Let me take you through all of them, and then we'll have a vote at the end.
Yeah, that would be great.
Great. So the first item is an item for Lehman College, and I feel like this is Lehman's day. It's Nursing Education Research and Practice Center. We are coming to the committee with two contracts, one for a consultant contract for architecture and design, and a second contract for the construction management for pre-construction. This is the new nursing education center. It's a 40,000-square-foot building, which will be going up on the Lehman campus. And just to remind the committee, we needed to move the nursing center to make room for the second phase of the science building, in hopes that we will soon get it built and designed. So we are moving the nursing center, and we went through an RFP process to be able to pick a firm who will design this new building. It's our hope, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't, but we would like to explore and experiment with either modular or prefabricated materials, and we will explore that with the architect, and if it doesn't work out, we'll have to go to a traditional form. Let me just also remind the committee that we have received another $20 million in this year's capital budget for this project. As a result of the money that we had from our five-year plan, we're pretty confident that we'll be able to build this building after we complete the design. That's the site.
That's, any questions to the Vice Chancellor?
The RFQ has been issued, or?
It's an RFP.
It was an RFP.
It's an RFP.
And the RFP was issued, and we went through a selection process, and a firm was selected.
But they're not designated here, or is that another reason?
They are, they will be designated. It's called Urban.
Urbine.
Urbine.
Sure.
Yes, and they have a subspecialty in nursing schools.
And what is, and the CM?
Not been selected yet.
Not been selected.
That's not been selected.
No. But we were very eager to get the architect moving, and that's why we came to the committee for your approval.
One question that was, well, I guess, the submission says that enrollment is growing. I know many of our graduate programs, it's dropping, so that, so enroll, it is still on track for growing enrollment?
This program is, as well as they have an undergraduate program at Lehman, and this is an area that's growing on the campus, and so.
Okay.
So the second item, actually, a number of these items are part of our critical maintenance program that's going on here at the university. The next item is for Queens College, and it's a contract to install a new roof over the south wing of Remsen Hall. The existing roof of the wing is leaking and is out of warranty, and it's beyond its useful life, and this project will install new roofing, and it will have a 20-year warranty.
Any questions to the Vice Chancellor?
The next item is.
Actually, there is, there was a typo in that thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Remsen was misspelled.
Oh, okay.
So that's the only thing.
You should have caught that.
So that has nothing to do with the substance, which sounds great, but in the attachment, Remsen has an O.
Thank you.
That's not the abandoned, not abandoned, that's not the vacant building, is it?
No, Remsen Hall is not a vacant building. It's a, it's a.
Yeah, I looked at the map, and I was trying to identify. One of the buildings is still under construction and vacant. Which one is that?
In addition to Remsen, but it was built in 1948.
There's new Remsen and old Remsen. A new Remsen was opened about five years ago, five or six years ago.
I'm thinking of the building when you first come on the campus.
The main, oh, you mean the administrative building?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's under construction, it's not empty.
Still under construction. It was vacant, but it's under construction.
It should be done, we're hoping by September they'll be able to move that down.
That's Kylie Hall.
Kylie Hall, thank you.
The next item is another Queens College item. It's a resolution to authorize a construction contract with the reconstruction of the campus-wide steam line system, and these steam lines are buried and are running in the steam pipe tunnel, provide heat and hot water for the central boiler of the campus buildings. A recent study showed the system has leaking joints, and this project will implement the recommendations outlined in the study, including the replacement of the steam line valves, steam line traps, and it will also assist Fitzgerald Gym, the dining hall, Clapper Hall, and Kylie Hall. All of these systems will be replaced for all these buildings.
Any questions to the Vice Chancellor?
What's the age of the current system?
It's old. It's old.
All right. And this also gets into, you know, sort of the general, which will, I guess, get back to next year, just about, you know, sort of the cycle for, because there, we, how many, you know, just, on what cycle are sort of we reviewing the heating systems throughout the whole system?
All of them were incorporated in the critical maintenance study that we initially did, and then we went back and redid five years ago, and probably we should go back and redo it soon.
But that's great, because that means we're paying attention and keeping up on top. Another question, just in terms of the comps for the contractor, one thing might be a typo. It says 18, is it 18,000 or was it 18, 18 million in the, over there for their estimated That's item eight for Farmingdale School of Business.
Yeah, I'm not up to that yet.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, that's fine.
Still on, well, I'm still on the Queens College.
This is, this is the one for the steam line. Okay, well.
That's three, it's about, not to exceed 3.5 million.
Yeah, it's just there in the comps.
I don't have what you're looking at.
Okay, I'll email you if that needs correction. Okay.
So the next item is another Queens College item, and it has to do with the support agreement for the financing of the summit, which is the Queens College residence, and I'm going to ask Don Farley, who I think all of you know, to join us. We'll also have Matt Saffienza here. So the current variable rate financing for the Queens College Residence Hall, we're proposing that it be replaced by a 30-year fixed rate financing through bonds issued by the New York City Economic Development Corporation. This resolution will authorize the continued credit support by CUNY, thereby securing low-interest rates for bonds and long-term financial stability for the project. And I thought that I would have Don take us through why we're here and why we have the need now to have this refinanced. Don was very much involved in the original financing of the dorm, and Matt is here because CUNY will continue to support this project as well. And I just want to point out that Bill Keller is here, and we've been working very closely with he and his staff on this refinancing.
The project was initially financed in 2008, and at that time, as you know, the credit markets were beginning to tighten, and the best financing available to us was through a non-core variable 30-year bond sale, bond issue coupled with a 10-year swap agreement secured by a letter of credit from Citizens Bank. Construction proceeded immediately after the sale of the bonds, and the summit opened in the fall of 2009 with essentially full occupancy. Shortly thereafter, Citizens was downgraded and was required to accept the tender of the bonds, which it had to resell in a very turbulent market. So since then, the letter of credit has been renewed for varying terms, the latest of which was in 2012 for a three-year term. However, to secure that renewal, CUNY was required to enter into a support agreement, committing it to make up for any shortfall in room rent income that was insufficient to cover principal and interest payments on the bonds. Citizens, which as you know, then merged with RB, Royal Bank of Scotland, was again downgraded this past November. So early this year, the college and CUNY engaged Lamont Financial Services to advise us on how best to stabilize the long-term financing for the project. With Lamont's assistance, various options were considered, and it was finally decided to solicit proposals from a number of financial institutions. In a competitive RFP, Morgan Stanley was selected to be the lead underwriter for the refinancing of the bonds. Now, the proposed refinancing will be a 30-year fixed-rate bond issue through the, issued through the Build NYC, which is a newly created division of the Economic Development Corporation. It's a conduit bond issuer for us, and it will continue the support agreement of CUNY's guarantee. As the resolution explanation indicates, the new bonds will redeem the outstanding variable rate bonds. It will pay off a $2 million developers' fee that had been deferred and accruing interest, and it will pay to terminate the swap agreement. Offsetting those costs will be a $4 million debt service reserve fund that'll be released from the current bonds or redeemed. So that will partially offset the cost of the bonds. We expect the new bonds to be rated AA II by Moody's and AA minus by S&amp;P, and would have today, or a few weeks ago, would have an average interest rate of about 3.25 percent. CUNY will further mitigate its risk by entering into a separate payment agreement with Queens College, under which the college will establish a reserve fund into which it will deposit certain currently available non-tax levy funds, and will accrue, will accrue anticipated annual surplus that's generated by the project, which we currently anticipate to start out at about $300,000 a year and continue to grow. Any release of those funds from the reserve funds will be subject to agreement between the Vice Chancellor of Budget and Finance and the college. Approving the resolutions before you will reduce CUNY's current risk exposure and provide low-cost, predictable financing for the project. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions to Don or the Vice Chancellor?
All right, I'll leap in. First, I do want to thank the Vice Chancellor for a great job of initial underwriting on this residence, which prevented this from being a real potential disaster. So great underwriting, meaning that the property performing according to projections makes up for a multitude of finance problems, and we should all be appreciative, and similarly, the refinance is absolutely a great thing to do, very well negotiated. I think the larger, so really, this is very much making lemonade out of a lemon, and I think that we really need to be grateful for that. I think that the larger issues are about getting into, you know, whether CUNY should be getting into the dorm business in the future. This is a decision we've already made here, but I do think in effect, we're ending up through a series of bad circumstances due to the bust with taxpayers guaranteeing sort of a dorm more or less for upper-middle-class students, and, you know, taxpayer guarantees at risk. And I think the underwriting eliminates most of the real risk, but we do have to, going forward, I think we do have to wonder whether, is that really our core mission? And then the second thing is, this thing ended up, again, due to a series of very bad events over the bust with a lot of complexity, and fortunately, again, because Vice Chancellor Winchell was very prudent, she told me this is the only swap in our portfolio, but the way that this worked out, it looks like in the original '08 documentation, you know, the swap wasn't really, looking at the '08 resolution, the swap wasn't really, really discussed, so we're getting into, we ended up in a very sophisticated deal where they swapped an LC guaranteed by the university, and those risks were not necessarily obvious. Now, and again, here, the underwriting really protects the university and the taxpayer, but I do think we need to be cautious about backing into complex deals that are not really our core mission going forward.
If I could, we have found these dorms to be very successful on the campuses that we have put them on. It has allowed us to attract students that we normally would not be able to attract, students who may have gone to a state school or a private school here in the city because they did have dorms. Many students in our dorms are supported by. supported by scholarships that are provided by the various foundations on those campuses. In addition, it's given us an ability to attract McQuarrie Honors College students and give them a dorm experience and a dorm life. I would agree with you that this original deal that we engaged in in 2008 was very complicated, but I would ask the committee to step back and see the times we were in in 2007 and 2008.
Hindsight's 2020.
Yeah. No, no, believe me. I, I went through this and yes, and so, the decision, the decision-making under very adverse circumstances was very prudent and, and very good.
And I just want to add that Matt and I work very closely on these dorm projects. And we spend a great amount of time talking about the rewards and the risk to the university. And I think that this refinancing could not have been accomplished if it wasn't for the good work of Queens College and Matt's staff and, and Don and Jennifer Friedman, who put hours and a lot of work into trying to get the best deal possible for CUNY. So, we look at each dorm project and we assess it. I, I will be honest with the committee, as I always am. The best deals for us are where we own the land, or we own the building. We're able to then take less risk. And, you know, we, we provide the dorms at a much lower expense than if we have to go into the free market. But, you know, this has been a very successful, both marketing and retention element for the colleges that really want to get the best students. So I, I appreciate what you're saying. And I appreciate your recognizing that this was very complex and was complex for us to reconstruct. Thank you.
You, Jay has opened up a question and a, and a door. How many dorm rooms do we have roughly across the system?
Rooms? Well, we have, let me just go through it because I never counted up the rooms. We have the College of Staten Island, which has about 400.
454.
Don knows.
You don't have to go through that exercise.
We have, we have City College.
How many campuses?
600.
600, City College. We have Queens College.
506.
And we have the Graduate Center.
93 student beds and eight student, eight faculty apartments.
So those are dorms that we have on our campuses that are on CUNY land. Then, we're involved with, as you know, because we brought it to the committee, where we have gone into other dorm situations where we have, various colleges have taken leases, long-term leases for beds. We have the EHS facility that Baruch and Hunter.
Ninety-seventh and Third. There's 100 beds for Hunter, 200 for Baruch.
Right. And then we have an affiliation agreement with the dorm at Brooklyn College. I think that's about...
Hunter's got their dorms.
What? At Hunter. Let's not forget Hunter. We have 600 beds at Hunter.
They were inherited from Bellevue Hospital when we took over the nursing school in the 60s.
There, they pay a much below market rate for those beds. So, yes.
Do we have a single management group for all the rooms? Or are all of them separately managed?
Well, what we've done with the ones we've built at Queens and City and Staten Island, we RFP'd for developer operator. So they operate nationally. They build the facilities and they run them.
I know those guys.
We have Capstone running Queens and City, American Campus Communities running Staten Island. The Graduate Center is really an apartment house that Brodsky Organization managed.
So each one, or they, there are various property managers for these facilities. But they all report to you?
But also, let me say...
They report to the campus.
Yeah. But let me say that...
They report to the campus?
Yeah.
But in addition, Vice Chancellor Sanchez is, either is or has hired a director on his staff who's going to deal with dorm or campus life. So there will be...
Well, that's a separate issue, right?
Yeah. Well, there are issues that pop up and, you know, so he will get involved with us as well, both for the existing dorms and as we go forward.
But the ongoing operation, the property maintenance, the ongoing operation and looking at the financing is at the individual campus level?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and the, you know, the marketing is really an integrated process between several departments of the college and Capstone. It has to be worked together. And the management of the facility is by Capstone. It's their people at Stafford. But there's a lot of interviewing of people by the college that, you know, they, it's a very close connection in how these are operated. But the day-to-day operation is on the campus with the campus. You don't run them centrally.
Any further questions?
Thank you. So the next item, it seems to be a Queens College day, is an item that the existing bathrooms at Fitzgerald Gym, the dining hall, and the dining hall addition, King Hall, and Rathus Hall are not handicapped accessible. This project will upgrade and modernize the existing bathrooms. Again, this is both a critical maintenance and an ADA project. And the amount will not exceed $1.2 million.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, item number six.
Well, this is not a Queens College item. It's for York though. We're still in the borough of Queens. We haven't left the borough of Queens. This...
It's also a performing arts center.
Yeah, that's right. This resolution will authorize the CUCF to execute a purchase order to enter into a contract with Siemens Industries to install the installation of an HVAC and control systems at York's Performing Arts Center Physical Education Complex and part of the academic core. Retro commissioning of the existing HVAC system is required to provide adequate heating and cooling for the buildings.
Okay.
And those are all the items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Does any, any further questions before I ask for a resolution approving items one through six?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
None. I think we can close this minute.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.